If everybody would have a seat, we'll go ahead and get started. Before calling this meeting to order, there will be a change, beginning with the September 6th, 2023 meeting. The start of the planning board will be at 1:00. With our pre-meeting is to start at 10:30. So, starting next month, instead of the 1:30, well, 1:35 here, but instead of the 1:30 start, will be at 1:00 from then on. So, next Sept-, uh, this September, next month, we'll be starting all the public meetings at 1:00. I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Sidney Franklin, Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Michael Pate, Dave Rosehacker is the Vice Chair, and I am Greg Rosenbaum, Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslow, Planning Director, Eric England, Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, Current Planning Manager, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Kathy Epperson is our Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. You are welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases have been recommended for layover, have been heard, or are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, therefore, will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the con-, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will then be removed. This case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they ma-, they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder in this room. And with that said, I'll get started with reading the consent cases. Now, remember, if I read a consent case, I'll ask if you want it removed. And that means if you want to give testimony today on that case. If not, it'll stay on consent, it'll be voted on, and no further action will be taken today on that case. Agenda item number four, case C-10-16-287, C-10-9-156, C-12-16-288. Applicant Jasper Stone, 192nd Dodge LLC. It is on for layover. Request: Final Platte Approval of Avenue 1, Lots 12 through 23, a subdivision inside the city limits with rezoning from AG to MU, along with approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for Avenue 1, and repeal of the ACI overlay district for a portion of the site. This was laid over from our July meeting, location southwest of 188th and Burke, Burke Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number five, case C-10-23-58, C-11-23-151. Applicant Green Lake Development LLC. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from R7 to TOD2MUR with repeal of the ACI area of civic importance overlay district, along with approval of a planned unit redevelopment overlay district. This was laid over from our July meeting, location 3511 and 3515 Howard Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, that'll be removed. Agenda item number five. Agenda item number six, case C-7-7-73. Applicant Joe Tarasic for Nebraska Methodist Hospital. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow hospital services general in the GO District. This also was laid over from our July meeting, location 8303 Dodge Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 12, case C-12-23-192. Applicant REI Funding Group LLC. It is on for layover. Request: Preliminary Platte Approval of Hanson's Country Club Hills RePlatte 4, a subdivision inside city limits. Location: Northeast of 72nd Street and Silver Valley Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 13, case C-10-22-239, C-12-22-240. Applicant MSTM Investments LLC and HRC Coventry Woods LLC. Request: Revised preliminary Platte and preliminary Platte approval and final Platte approval, lots 170, 1 through 174, outlots A through G of Coventry Wood, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR, R4, R5, and R6. Location: Northeast of 216th and Harrison Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 14, case C-10-23-197, C-12-23-198. It's the Salvation Army, Western Division. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary and final Platte Approval of Marysville RePlatte 3, a minor Platte inside city limits with rezoning from R5 and R7 to R5, along with approval of the ACI 1 overlay district. Location: Northwest of 24th and Pratt Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? You do? Okay. Agenda item 14.
And 18.
And 18, because those go together. Okay, moving on. Agenda item number 19. 18 was on, but we took that off with 14. Agenda item number 19, case C-7-23-205. Applicant Andrew Flair. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a conditional use permit to allow general retail sales in the LI District. Property is located within the Flood Fringe and Floodway Overlay Districts. Location: 11707 Stonegate Circle. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 20, case C-7-23-206. Applicant Wiseman Development LLC. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a conditional use permit to allow warehousing and distribution limited in the CC District. Location: 9810 and 9840 M Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 21, case C-7-23-207. Applicant Jared Gerber. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the presumed conditional use permit pursuant to Section 55883Q to allow a single-family residential detached use in the GC District. Location: 9106 Fremont Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Do we have a motion for the consent items that were on a, on for approval?
Motion to layover cases 4 and 12.
No, I went for approval.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to approve cases 6, 13, 19, 20, and 21. I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, 6 to 0.
Okay, now, do we have a motion for the consent cases that were on for layover? You're not doing it, okay.
Motion to layover cases number 4 and number 12.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, 6 to 0.
Okay, those consent cases that were left on consent, like I said earlier, no further action will be taken today. Uh, if you were here for one of those cases, um, you are welcome to stay, or you are free to leave. We'll get going with the rest of the agenda. The first three cases are administrative only. There will be no opportunity for public testimony. Agenda item number one, case C-10-23-104, C-12-23-105. Applicant Jeremy Hall Advanced Acquisitions LLC. Request: Final Platte Approval of Bungalows at White Hawk, White Hawk Lake, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R6, along with approval of the major commercial corridor overlay district. Location: 4205 South 204th Street. Eric.
Yeah, so this final Platte, um, is for the entirety of the site located southeast of 204th and F Street. Preliminary Platte was recommended for approval June 7th by the Planning Board and approved July 25th by City Council. It includes 22 acres of mix of styles and multifamily rental product. There are a few, um, items that will need to be addressed before, um, proceeding to City Council, one of those being, uh, finalization of the acceptable tree mitigation plans, just needing to move a few, uh, trees around, um, along with subdivision agreement items. Staff recommends approval of the MCC overlay district, approval of the rezoning from AG to R6, approval of the final Platte subject to the four conditions in the report.
Any additional comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the MCC major commercial corridor overlay district, approval of the rezoning from AG to R6, and approval of the final Platte subject to the four conditions outlined in the report.
I get it.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, 6 to 0.
Agenda item number two, case C-12-23-76. Applicant LOA Holdings LLC. Request: Final Platte Approval of Copper Ridge RePlatte 58, subdivision outside city limits. Location: Northeast of 157th and Laurel Avenues. Eric.
Yeah, so this Platte was before the Planning Board on June 7th for the preliminary Platte and approved by City Council on July 25th. It is consistent with the approved prelim Platte, includes 11 single-family lots, one outlot. There's one, um, kind of major item that still needs to be worked out, and that's coordination with the Douglas County and SID 501 regarding the widening of 156th Street along the frontage, as was shown in the original subdivision agreement for that SID. That being said, staff recommends approval of the final Platte subject to submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding to City Council.
Any additional comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the final Platte subject to some acceptable final subdivision agreement for.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate? Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, 6 to 0.
Agenda item number three, I need to recuse myself. I'm gonna turn the, uh, meeting over to Dave Rosehacker, and I'm gonna leave the chambers.
Let the record show that Chairman Rosenbaum has left the chambers.
Case number C-12-23-144. Applicant Lakeside Farms LLC. Request is final Platte approval of Lakeside Farms, a cluster subdivision outside city limits, with approval of waivers to Sections 5399 Sidewalks, 53910 Streetscape Standards to waive installation of streetlights, and 538 Stopping Site Distance, laid over on 7523. Location is northwest of 72nd Street and Bennington Road. Eric.
Yeah, so, uh, this preliminary Platte was recommended for approval by the Board back on June 7th and then approved by City Council June 27th. That included several Chapter 53 waivers, which is our subdivision code. Uh, there were three waivers that were not acted upon with the preliminary Platte, so those have been carried over. Based on additional information provided by the development team, City Staff is comfortable with those waivers, subject to the criteria laid out in the recommendation report. Uh, the applicant has also worked with City Staff on providing adequate slopes analysis and, um, documentation regarding the areas on the affected, um, on the areas affected by that on the Platte, um, as well as provided additional information for a barn use for potential horses of the 17 lot homeowners if they choose to have horses. So, they'll need to continue to coordinate with staff on potential ZBA waiver related to that as it pertains to the ag cluster regulations, um, as well as language in the subdivision agreement for that item, as well as a few others. There is, um, been conversations, obviously, we discussed here for quite a while in the pre-meeting about the wetlands issue. Um, we are recommending approval subject to certain language and criteria happening, happening before proceeding to City Council. Um, I guess I would just open it up for conversations. We could discuss any of that, um, in further detail at this time. I will point out that if you do wish for the applicant or their representatives to come up and speak or answer questions, either the, a Board member or City Staff would have to call them up. So, I will read the recommendation of the city. Staff recommends approval of the waiver to Section 5399 Sidewalks, subject to coordinating with the city on final design, trail designs and associated language in the subdivision agreement. Approval of the waiver to 538 Stopping Site Distance, subject to coordinating with Public Works on installation of a streetlight at the impacted location. Approval of the waiver to Section 53910 Streetscape Standards to waive installation of streetlights, except for the streetlight required as part of the stopping site distance waiver. And approval of the final Platte subject to the four conditions in the recommend-, recommendation report prior to City Council. So, obviously, I read the recommendation. That does not mean that there can't be, uh, substantial conversation if the Board wishes.
Thank you, Eric. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. I'm just gonna, uh, we had quite a discussion in a pre-meeting about this, probably 45 minutes on this, and I've seen this as a project that's been ongoing for quite some time, and we want to keep it progressing and moving forward, uh, as the city does as well, and the developer does, uh, actually as well. So, within the recommendation, under item two of the final Platte, uh, which is the wetlands issue that was, uh, um, recommended there, I'm just gonna offer some language that I think maybe might help keep this thing moving forward, but also make sure that the developer conforms with the requirements. So, I'm just gonna read this. Some of this was provided by the developer, but I'm gonna insert some of my own language in here as well, so.
So, Mike, before you do that, so clarification, you were swapping out condition two
Two.
With the language that you're about to read.
Yes. Just, just for comment, or just for discussion, okay? So, the language I would substitute would be prior to forwarding the request to City Council for final action, developer will submit to the city an analysis prepared by a professional third-party consultant of whether any jurisdictional wetlands were present on the property. If the analysis submitted indicates that there are jurisdictional wetlands present on the property, the applicant will address those issues, which may include mitigation. At such time, the necessary jurisdictional agencies, which may include the USA CE. And then furthermore, such analysis must be approved, reviewed, and approved by City Planning and City Law Department for appropriateness. So, that would require them to conform with, and to have the city, give the city another chance to review the documentations provided by the third-party consultant to make sure that they're comfortable with the language that's contained within that, uh, document. And also to make sure that the third-party consultant is a valid and reliable third-party consultant as well.
You may have said this, that, uh, that's prior to forward.
Yeah, and that was on the beginning. Prior to, uh, the beginning was prior to the forwarding, forwarding the request onto City Council.
Any further discussion?
Can you please reread the last sentence, or maybe those last two sentences on that?
So, the last two sentences were, were, um, let me get to them. If the analysis submitted indicates that there are jurisdictional wetlands present on the property, the applicant will address those issues, which may include mitigation, at such time with the necessary, necessary jurisdictional agencies, which may include the USA CE. And then furthermore, such analysis must be reviewed and approved by the City Planning Department and City Law Department for appropriateness. And the other thing in there is that, any jurisdictional, so, one of the things in here was whether any jurisdictional, uh, wetlands were present instead of are present. They were present.
Any further discussion?
Both, are, but, uh, are and both, are and were, right? That'd be fine with me too. Are, yeah, are and were would probably be appropriate for that too. So, that would be of whether any jurisdictional wetlands were or are present.
Okay, so, so that we're clear. Thank you for your patience out there. Could you, well, I guess that wasn't an official recommendation, was it? That was just your proposal?
That's just for discussion.
Okay.
At this point.
Okay.
Okay. I'd like to see it move forward, personally. I'd like to see this project move forward, and I'm just trying to find a way to keep it moving forward, but yet get the City Planning Department and City Law Department the opportunity to review any of the documentation that's submitted, as well as vet the agency or the depart-, or the, uh, organization that's doing the, the analysis as well.
I just don't think we're in a position really to consider an amendment to what the Planning Department has already put together in the recommendation, even with the 45 minutes of discussion we had upstairs. So, if we decide to move this forward, I'm gonna approve the language that was in Eric's recommendation.
What's the difference if we, if we laid it over, and then we, we got the report that's gonna be done on the 18th, and, and City Planning had time to review that, uh, it still isn't gonna be forwarded to City Council either way, right? I mean, if we laid it over, that, that'd give us time, and, and then maybe if that report's not done, we can work on language in a, in a more timely manner. Uh, yeah, so.
This, this is really forced.
Yes, so, and I totally agree with you on that. This is just my attempt to try and keep it moving forward, right? But if we don't, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna agree with, because I'd like to keep it. I'm not gonna agree with the language that's, that's in the recommendation. As Sidney mentioned, so I would agree to a layover before I would, I would, because I'd like to, yeah, I'd like, but I'd like to keep it going. That's why I offered this.
I'm worried about precedent. I, you know.
But we're not really set, because they still have to approve it.
I know. Yeah. I get you, I get you.
Yeah.
I think an approval can still keep things going. Documentation and active coordination with the US Corps, I don't know, that could be good.
Well, so, just for the audience's benefit here, and Eric read it, but it's very, very rigid, the second, uh, to keep it moving forward. Submittal of the following items, this is the replacement paragraph I'm talking about. Submittal of the following items, a full wetlands analysis for the entire site showing any jurisdictional wetlands, both pre and post grading, a mitigation plan if any jurisdictional wetlands were previously disturbed, or if any disturbed as a part of this development outside required street connections, documentation of action, act-, active coordination with the US Army Corps of Engineers. So, I just worry about how long, if we keep that language in there, how long that process would take.
Well, again, that report's gotta be done on, turn on your mic.
The, the report's gonna be done on the 18th, so, I mean. But, but that language, would, would, if we keep the language that's in here right now, we're just saying, they have to do this. But if we lay it over, if we lay it over, or accept my language, then at least we keep it, hopefully, moving forward, but maybe at a slower pace.
Anyone else wanna weigh in on this?
I mean, I said my comments upstairs, that I, I think it's too complicated of a, um, condition that I don't personally understand well enough, so I lean on the Planning Department's recommendation for something like this. So, my vote will either be for approval of the language as is, or, or a layover.
All right, any other discussion? If not.
Yeah, yeah, Jim or Kurt, developing team, yeah, would, would you come up? Just kinda give us your thoughts, what we're, yeah, discussing.
Thank, thank you for letting us talk today. So, Jim Bouger, 10250, Regency Circle, Suite 300. Um, I represent the developer, Lakeside Farms, and, um, I, I appreciate the fact that, um, I guess this appears rushed, and it is, is a last-minute request by the developer. appears rushed, and it is, is a last-minute request by the developer. It's sort of a result of the timing of the whole process in getting to where we're at today, in that the recommendation reports don't come out until a few days before this hearing. And so, I had sent a memo, or we, once we received that recommendation, I met with our team, our development team. We consulted with some experts in this area as to what this language meant. There was a recent Supreme Court case, it's called Sackett, which is a, I guess, a monumental case in the EPA and US Corps of Engineers' regulation of wetlands and determination of waters of the US. And it is, it's, the, the impact of that case is, it creates a great deal of uncertainty within what the Corps and EPA's jurisdiction is. And so, in light of that case, and in light of how the recommendation is written, our project could literally be held up for years to try and satisfy this requirement, or, and, and again, I've provided some language, some excerpts out of that Supreme Court case, and it expressly discusses the very dilemma that developers are put in by conditioning jurisdictional determinations on allowing projects to go forward, because it doesn't allow the developer, if there's a dispute over jurisdictional determination, it doesn't allow the, the developer to proceed with a project until that's effectively been determined, and that literally can take years. And we have been working with professional consultants over the last four years, and it is our firm belief that these are non-jurisdictional waters, it's a man-made, created lake, and there's no continuous flow of water, and which is consistent with how this Supreme Court decision. So, these are all legal, you know, things that are going on in this area that further complicate, again, how this recommendation language, and it just is, and I'm not debating the fact that submitting a wetlands analysis is a consistent comment by the planning department. But the difficulty in this case is, the area that is potentially impacted, we're not, you know, we're not even doing any grading. So any work that's been done in this area is a historical grading, or is a historical issue, that we have to deal with, the Corps with, in any event, no matter what, whether there's a determination in favor or against, it's the Corps' decision as to whether they're going to do anything about work that was done two or three years ago. So, we're, our plat is not impacting, we're not gonna be doing any grading in these areas that are potentially jurisdictional. So, what, as a development team, we're left in a really difficult position at this point if we have to live by this language, because potentially, our, we could be sitting here for years and not be able to move forward with a development that's not impacting any of these areas whatsoever, not, it's, we're not doing any more grading in those areas, we're not required to do, get, get a permit for, for any of the work that we're doing other than the area that we have actually submitted a wetlands analysis on, which we do, agree that we do need a four-four permit for that area. So, what, what I've tried to do, and, and as Mr. Pate indicated, is try and suggest some language that would allow this development to move forward, and with full recognition that we will provide professionally-prepared information that will indicate whether there, we believe, or whether the consultant believes that there is, are jurisdictional areas that are impacted. So, and if there are, then we'll have to deal with the Corps on that issue. Regardless of, regardless of whether our plat moves forward or doesn't move forward, we still have to deal with the Corps on those issues. I mean, it's, it's out there today, if there was work done out there today, and we violated some provision of the, of the federal statutes, we have to deal with that, regardless of whether this plat goes forward or not. But to hold, withhold the plat moving forward until there's a final determination of that, that's what we have a really big hang-up on.
So Jim, that's, that's why, I, I was wondering if we could go with a layover on this, because that would give us some time to get the report on the eighteenth, or have that submitted. You're not bound by the language that I, I believe some of us are gonna vote for, as is. So, I, I'm wanting to know if you would, and your clients would be fine with a layover, so that we could feel comfortable about our decisions, and the planning board could review the letter, and possibly move forward after that. Because either way, we're gonna have a vote on, on something, and I just wanted to give you an option before we do.
I, I understand, Mr. Moore, and I, I understand that, and, and again, it's just that the, the timing issue from the developer's standpoint, in trying to get some, hopefully be able to get a building permit this fall, and get the, get the plat recorded. So, that, by laying it over a month, that's, again, it's not.
It's either, it's either that, or if we vote as is, you're stuck on that for what you say could quite possibly be.
And I, and I don't know what that means to, to the project. I mean, it, again, I, it's, and I'm not trying to be critical that, the write-up and how it was done, and it's just, fully understanding the impact of how that's drafted is the problem. And because it creates a, it creates, you know, a potentially open-ended problem that we can't solve in any reasonable period of time. So, if you, if you approve that language, and you allow that condition to be approved, and you say, okay, well, we'll approve the plat based on that condition, then we're still in the same position, and, and how do we ever resolve that problem? So that's, that's what I'm struggling with.
And that's why I'm trying to come up with language right here, because I don't feel like I have a better understanding of what is the overall implications of sitting in front of all these people trying to create a condition that.
I get it, I get it, yeah.
Any other questions for Jim?
You didn't answer.
I know I didn't.
I don't know where it's gonna go, I guess.
Yeah, and I don't know if, if Kurt or Jeff wanna weigh in on that, but, my clients, but I, I guess I did, I have a question, I guess, for, from Jennifer's, yeah. And may, maybe ask Jennifer Taylor, what if, is there any way to be able to write some language that, I guess, on the fly here, that would allow us some ability to move forward with this, and yet give the city comfort that we're doing what we're say we're gonna do?
Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department. Short of us, you know, adjourning this meeting and sitting down and having a, you know, lengthy conversation to try and figure something out, I don't know how we can do that in this venue right now.
Okay.
At least not, from what I understand here from the planning board, and give them the ample and proper time to review whatever it is we would come up with.
Are you, are you, what's your, what's your opinion of the, you know, of what I mentioned here, which is get the City Planning and City Law Department the opportunity to review the documentation once it's provided?
I think that's what would need to have it happen anyway, so I wouldn't have any objection to you adding that language in there, you know. And I have full faith in the planning department and law that they would be reasonable, and that as long as we submitted a professional report that's consistent with the information that's typically in a wetlands analysis, I, I don't have any problem with the city reviewing that, so.
And give them an opportunity to vet the third-party consultant as well, to make sure that they're comfortable with that, with that company.
But the only way that's an option is with a layover.
Well, or with Mike's language, I think that's what he's.
Yeah, because it keeps it moving forward, at least.
Right, and I guess I'm saying, I didn't get the consensus that that would be approved.
We haven't got there yet, yeah.
I guess if I could chime in on the proposed new language from Mr. Pate, you know, if, if the wetlands analysis comes back, and it's a thorough review, of course, and it says it's non-jurisdictional, that, that's a little more clear-cut, I guess. What is the issue, though, if, if there's been impacted wetlands that were jurisdictional? You know, usually, those are items that get wrapped up at the plating stage before proceeding to City Council. So, you've then put staff in a difficult position, you know, so I, I guess I just don't know how that plays out, if, if there are jurisdictional wetlands.
If I can respond to maybe, if, if I can respond, Eric's.
Sure.
Comment there, that's the very problem that we have, is that could take years to resolve, and likely would take years to resolve, in, in this case. So, I, I mean, I, I think the language is proposed, that we're, if, if it does come up with jurisdictional wetlands, again, we're not impacting, and I understand in the conventional development, where we're grading within areas, or we're constructing public improvements within areas that are jurisdictional, you have to get a four-four permit before you can even do that work. But we're talking about areas that are not impacted at all by any of the improvements that are within this plat today. It's all based on historical work, or historical work that's been done. So, I, I don't think the city has necessarily a stake in that game, other than, you know, an obligation to vet the issue, or to vet, understand whether there's jurisdictional wetlands or not. And, but then it becomes the Corps, it becomes an enforcement issue with the Corps if they make a determination that it's jurisdictional. And they'll do what they do, in whatever timeframe that they want to do it. And, again, and we'd have the ability to object to any determination, or, you know, have a dispute with them at that point, but it's, it's entirely within the Corps' enforcement authority.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Yes.
Any other discussion? If not, do we have a motion?
I'm gonna motion to layover.
Second. Second.
Kathy, would you call the vote?
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Approved, five to zero.
Yes, layover.
Okay, wanna, okay. The record shows that Chairman Rooseveltbaum has returned to the chambers. Dave? Three's done.
We'll get going with agenda item number five, that was on consent, it was removed. Case C-ten dash twenty-three dash fifty-eight, C-eleven dash twenty-three dash one fifty-one. Applicant Green Lake Development LLC, request rezoning from R-seven to TOD-T-M-U-R, with repeal of the ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District, along with approval of a planned unit redevelopment overlay district. Laid over from our July meeting, location thirty-five eleven and thirty-five fifteen Howard Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon, Justin Spooner with Green Lake Development, address is thirty-five eleven, South one hundred fifth Avenue, Omaha six-eight one-two-four. Thank you very much for the time here. The project that we are discussing is at thirty-five eleven, thirty-five fifteen Howard Street. This is a vacant lot totaling eighty-four hundred square feet, and the plan is to put a fifteen-unit multifamily property up there, consisting of seven efficiency units, five one-bedrooms, and three two-bedrooms. And with that, that's the general basis of the project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Justin. Any other proponents?
Hi, Brendan Finley, address one, one zero eight, three six, Old Mill Road, part of the civil design team, hope to, here to help answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Brendan. Any other proponents? Are you a proponent?
For the project?
For the project.
Okay.
With the project, for proponent.
Okay.
I do have a few exhibits, I'm hoping to make this, if, if needed, I hope to make this brief, though.
Just give the name and address, please.
Name and address, Lucas, thirty-seven, twenty-seven, North Hundred Eighth Street.
What was your first name?
Lucas.
Okay.
Um, I think the project's a very good fit for the neighborhood, not, not out of scale at all, plenty of apartment, fellow apartment dwellers around in that area, if you just looked around that neighborhood. The frontage, simple, pretty cute, I think, not bad, not bad choice of sort of textures, if you will, would look pretty nice, I think, in a suitable color scheme. Obviously, elevator wasn't in the cards, walk-up building, you know? That's kind of, kind of part of, it's hard to get an elevator in an infill-sized building, that's, that's a challenge. But, still, the building does need a few accessibility tweaks. Ground floor two-bedroom came close to being a full accessible unit, but the master toilet is too small. A-one-seventeen-one-six-zero-four-dot-three requires that to be five feet, not two foot eight inches, wide, around the toilet, so someone in a wheelchair can actually get in and use it. And that's, pull, if you pulled the shower kind of out, and then shrunk the walk-in closet for the master bedroom on the first floor, or just moved that closet for that matter, you'd fix the problem. Not hard. Obviously, that shower would have to be set up to be fitted for a transfer shower, and you'd have to go off a front-loading combo washer dryer in the laundry closet, it's have a stackable. I actually have, that, such as one of those, give me guys. Yes. And the other one, two one-bedroom units on the ground floor would need to be type B units, again, going, sticking with the IBCA-one-one-seventeen requirements, and that would mean they need to be on an accessible route, which they aren't right now, because the only way to get into them right now is up the stairs, from the, up the stairs and over the front porch. You could fix that either if you wanted ramps up to the side of the units, or you could, or you could rearrange the kitchen a little, like move the stove across the way, move the fridge, take out a little counter space, and have an entrance from the, accessible entrance from the inside corridor. And then last but not least, veranda, obviously on the third floor, storage on the second floor, not exactly wheelchair accessible, so I was thinking you could run a veranda, like deck space, off the, off the living room door, if you're placed out with like a accessible sliding glass door, those do exist, example. And obviously, you could run storage just off, as like a little lean-to off the deck, and you could, you could have about a five-foot deck there. Fifty-five, seven, eight, two-B two prevents a deck not more than two feet off the ground to extend up to ten foot into a setback, provided you still have at least three feet of setback, or you could run an outdoor space off the ramp landing.
Lucas, real quick, if I could just, we appreciate the input, some of the review for ADA compliance will come at the building permit stage, so some of those finer details aren't being finalized necessarily with today's plan, but I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, figured I'd offer some suggestions while it's still early in the paper, because obviously later you go into the process, harder it is to fix things.
Thank you, absolutely.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, closed public hearing? Additional comments, questions? Do you, do you wanna come up, Justin, and offer anything, or did Eric cover it for him?
Really quick, thank you very much for your comments, we will definitely take those under.
Who needs your name and advice?
Justin Spooner, thirty-five eleven, South one hundred fifth Avenue.
Thank you.
I just wanna thank Lucas for his comments, and we will definitely take that under advisement along with the city as we do move forward into the process.
Thank you, Justin. Eric?
Yeah, so, this case has been laid over a couple times on the, on the planning board agenda, and we've worked very hard with the applicant, and we're very appreciative of the back-and-forth dialogue and conversations and redesigns that have taken place. Some of that was based on a parking ratio, and what TOD can support as far as required parking, and based on the unit count, and some additional flexibility with the site design, we were able to get there. So, we're very supportive of the project, we think it's a great infill project, a few blocks away from many transit lines, including the orbit line, four blocks to the north. So, I don't have anything other specifics to say, there's a few minor details to be worked out before the plans can be submitted to City Council, but staff recommends that the rezoning from R-seven to TOD-two-M-U-R, approval of the repeal of the ACI overlay district, and approval of the PUR overlay district, subject to submittal of final acceptable plans prior to City Council.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve rezoning from R-seven to TOD-two-M-U-R, approval of the repeal of the ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District, and approval of the PUR overlay district, subject to the submittal of acceptable final plans prior to forwarding to City Council.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero.
Agenda item number seven, case C-three dash twenty-three dash one-eight-six, applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request-
request approval of an amendment to Chapter fifty-five zoning regarding assisted living permitted districts, duplex residential lot width in R-five, R-six zoning, correction of an error for maximum wall sign area in AG and DR zoning, and clarification to the townhouse residential definition, tree planting, and other applicable fees with an application. Location, City of Omaha and the three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Eric?
Yeah, so this is a change to Chapter fifty-five of the Omaha Municipal Code, which is the zoning code. The six changes that Chair had just mentioned, these are all relatively minor changes. First one, opening up assisted, the assisted use, or the assisted living use type to other office and commercial districts that is currently not allowed, either, that'll either permit or with conditional use permit. And that will align with multifamily, which is very similar intensity rating. Clarification of the townhouse residential definition and use type, there was some conflicting language in the code. Decreasing the lot width requirement for duplex residential use type in the R-five and R-six zoning, that will align with another code change back in 2020 for the overall lot width requirement. Clarification for tree planting provisions, exempting single-family residential use for additional tree planting requirements that are in the zoning code. And then we had an error on one of our signage pages. And then the clarification on the zoning application fee schedule. This is basically in the section where there are lists of zoning application fees, there is a provision that says, you know, though a project is not exempt from any other applicable city feed, fee throughout the remainder of the Omaha Municipal Code. And this specifically points out one section that will always apply. So we did send notification to every registered neighborhood association in the City of Omaha. So I did have some conversations and coordination with probably eight to ten of those who just had some questions but no concerns. Obviously, the city's recommending approval, but you opened it up for the public hearing.
Any other proponents?
A little more extemporaneously here. Lucas Tho, thirty-seven twenty-seven North Hundred A Street. Definitely a good idea. I actually tinkered around in my, I've tinkered around, just sort of sketch exercises with duplex designs on city lots before. And that sixty-foot, forty-foot to sixty-foot jump in R-five was actually a bit of a hang-up in a lot of places. So it's good, although my only suggestion would be to decrease the maximum wire at the four thousand square feet as well, just sort of line up with that and kind of make it a lot easier to, make it so you don't want it being a really deep lot just to infill as a duplex.
Thank you, Lucas. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions? Eric, did you want to add?
Yeah, if I could just touch on Lucas's point about the lot area minimum for R-five, that is true. We kept that at six thousand square feet because that does align with the overall density allowed in the R-five district, which requires a three thousand sit area per unit. We are continuing to look at development regulations in all of our zoning districts. And there are some other provisions that we continue to look at. But any proposals or changes to those were not appropriate at this time. And there's been no final determination, but we do continue to look at that. So I just want to mention that.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six to zero.
Moving on, agenda item number eight, case C-three dash twenty-three dash one eighty-seven. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the 2024 through 2029 capital improvement plan. Excuse me. Location, City of Omaha and the three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. And is Eric presenting or you are?
I am, I am up again here, so yes. Derek and Eric, yes. Yeah, so long-range manager Derek Miller went pretty extensively in the pre-meeting, but had another meeting. So I will just cover the basics. If you have any further questions or details, we can definitely get into that. This is a sizable document. It's a six-year capital, capital improvement program plan, 2024 to 2029. This was released with the mayor's proposed budget last week at City Council. So the Planning Department, in conjunction with the mayor's office and multiple city departments, have been working on this every year for a number of months dating back probably into January of this year. So departments submit their preferred projects based on the funding that's available on the revenue bonds, and what you have is the CIP. So that is finalized by the mayor in the priority committee, which is usually the department heads. So staff is recommending approval.
Do we have any other proponents? Seeing none, do we have any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions from the board?
I just, I'll just make a comment every year when I read through these and just marvel at the detail, how much work must go into repairing this, keeping track of this. You look at, I mean, it's obvious, people see big projects, it's easy to keep track of big projects. But if you look at this, there's some awful little ones, too, that are vitally important to different neighborhoods and stuff like that. And so it's, it's a good work. Appreciate the work.
Yeah, thank you. And I guess I would just point, the board's role in this is just to make sure that the document is master plan compliant, which of course it is. The public hearing for the budget and the City Council, at the City Council also includes the Capital One Improvement Program. Thank you for the good comments, Dave.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six to zero.
Okay, next we're going to take agenda items number nine, fifteen, and seventeen altogether. Agenda item number nine, case C-three dash twenty-three dash one eighty-eight. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the NOOK-TIF redevelopment project plan. Location, north and south of Eighth and Pine Street. Agenda item number fifteen, case C-twelve dash twenty-three dash two hundred. Applicant Bluestone Development LLC, request preliminary and final plat approval of NOOK and minor plat inside city limits. Location, north and south of Eighth and Pine Street. And agenda item number seventeen, case C-ten dash ten dash one sixty-seven, C-ten dash seventy-nine dash one thirty, C-nine dash eighty-seven dash thirty-nine, C-seven dash twenty-three dash two oh four. Applicant Bluestone Development LLC, request approval of the expansion of the NCE Tenth Street Neighborhood Conservation and Enhancement Overlay District along with approval of the repeal of the PK parking overlay from a portion of the site, and approval of the CUP Large Project Conditional Use Permit to allow multiple-family residential development in excess of one acre in the NCE. Location, north and south of Eighth and Pine Streets. May we hear from the development team?
Mr. Chair, board members, good afternoon. Robert Griffith, one-one-four-four-zero, West End Road, here on CAF. The applicant, Worthington Ten LLC. With us today also is the development team, Christian Endeavor Christensen of Bluestone, Joe Zadina of Lampard Nearest, an engineer for the project, as well as Todd Mueller of Valley Point Architecture. As Mr. Chair stated, we have three items today. I'll kind of give you an overview of the whole project, and then at the end, you can talk about the TIF specifically as pertains to item nine. So this is the subject site, if you look above the overhead. It's made up of approximately twelve total parcels.
Robert, move it up just a little bit, so, because we can't get the, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So twelve total parcels. It surrounds, if you can see here, this is the new Pine Elementary School, OPS Elementary School there. And it's southeast here of William and Tenth Street. Totally, it's approximately four point seven acres, total area. So the new development, as I said, will surround this elementary school here. It's made up of ten vacant parcels of land. Developers owned those for approximately six years, 2017 around. And so this project has been in the works for quite a while. It's affected by COVID and then some other projects moving up in front. So it's been a long time coming. Two parcels, if you can see these two right here, currently have existing homes. Both will become part of this project in that one potentially could be moved, relocated with the neighborhood or demolished, and the other one is likely not in a condition to be moved. So that will likely be torn down as well. Currently, the zoning, adjust this so everybody can see. Mostly R-seven, as you can see above here and to the side. There is a portion that is the NCE overlay. Part of our project and our request will be to extend that NCE overlay to the remainder of the project site. The elementary school is existing, NCE. There's no additional modifications to the zoning, just to extend that NCE overlay. It's made up of, eventually when we do the replating, there will be, if I can go up here, sorry. Six individual lots. And they will again be zoned to NCE as part of the project as well. They're going to, we will remove, if you recall, that small portion of PK overlay in the southeast corner. And so that will be the new proposed final plat. So as far as the multifamily project itself, it's made up of eleven total buildings. In mass, this will be two hundred and fifty residential market rate units. They're a mixture of both townhome and apartment styles. The unit mix is broken up between two hundred and seven one-bed, those are approximately six hundred and forty square feet. And we generally rent those at around eleven hundred dollars a month. And, excuse me, forty-three two-bed, those are a little over a thousand square feet. And most likely, we rent around eighteen hundred dollars a month. So give you kind of a look at what the elevations are. The project is fully compliant with the NCE district regulations. We're not requesting any waivers, so no waivers to parking, setback, coverage density, anything like that. It's fully compliant. There will all be three stories. And a major thrust of the project was to try and incorporate the design elements into the character and type of the neighborhood itself. So if you'll see the design, they have pitched roofs in the townhome style, articulated entrances. This is the row house, the townhome, townhome style. Additionally, the apartments have the same feel, the entrances are set back. So there's some breakup between the facade of the front and the rear, and there'll be landscaping along the front. Again, the goal is really to use the design of the neighborhood and not plop down a large rectangular apartment building, which is oftentimes seen, but break this up into the eleven separate buildings and incorporate into the facade of the neighborhood itself. Let's give you another idea of what we expect this to look. As far as design and materials, of course, it will comply with urban design codes. There'll be high-end materials, including bricks, stucco, glass. And we'll be in full compliance with those design codes as well. This is the row homes and as well as the apartment buildings. Again, you can expect the typical amendments with, amenities, excuse me, with a nice apartment development such as this. One specific feature that the developer is working on is using these pocket parks, which are indoor amenity areas scattered throughout the development that is kind of surrounded by the buildings. It gives it kind of that neighborhood park feel. And those include seating areas, shade, green areas, fire pits, grills, that sort of thing. Again, the idea is to include the character of the neighborhood in the design. Like any multifamily project, parking is always a consideration. Again, we are not requesting any parking waiver. Under NCE parking regs, it's a one-to-one ratio, which means two hundred and fifty spots were providing two hundred and sixty-four parking spaces. There also will be bike storage throughout. Part of the development process was to work with OPS. And so in 2022, or excuse me, in 2020, the developer actually worked with OPS to put together a traffic study that OPS did use in the construction of their elementary school. Part of that study will also be followed for this. And to keep in mind, as far as coordinating with the school, as far as parking moving forward. Of course, the project also incorporates a number of public improvements. These include new streets, street lighting, excuse me, not new streets, new street lighting, sidewalks, right-of-way landscaping, in a total amount of about three hundred and forty thousand dollars. The applicant did have numerous coordinations with the neighborhood and certain neighborhood groups, beginning back in 2019 with a small group to go over preliminary plans. And then that group began in April of this year. And then they were able to have a formal neighborhood meeting in June of this year. It was about a couple hours at the Francis Cabrini Center. The development team was present along with a few members of city staff and about forty neighbors, I believe, were in attendance for that. Of course, parking was one of the things discussed.
Robert, how many neighbors did you say?
Forty, around forty.
Okay.
And additionally, they have been in communication since that point. The developer has also met with the principal of Pine Ridge Elementary to discuss this project and our plans. And the school is in full support of the project. And we will, of course, coordinate with them during construction and moving forward as far as drop-off and pick-up times and how that will look. So as far as the TIF itself, the request is one point six million. Total construction cost is estimated to be about forty-five point six million. We expect to start around as early as possible with this fall, around September, mid to late September of this year, and hopefully finish in spring of 2025. And this is a twenty-year TIF, just to remind you. And we expect a large contribution of construction employment in the amount of about two hundred and fifty-five construction jobs with over a fifteen point three million dollar payroll. So with that, the whole team again is here to answer any questions. I myself am here as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Don, did you want to come up with it?
Excuse me, six point one.
Yeah.
Okay, I want to make sure one of us had it right. Yeah, Don Seaton, the City Planning Department, on behalf of the project and the project's TIF application, specifically item number nine in your, on the agenda. The details of the project have been covered very thoroughly by Mr. Griffith. He did an excellent job, took most everything I was going to say. But I'll just recap real briefly. This is just south of the Old Market, south of downtown, one of our older neighborhoods. We're looking at two hundred and fifty market rate apartment rental units in eleven separate three-story buildings. This is a forty-five point seven million dollar investment in the neighborhood. They are requesting TIF support from our TIF program in the amount of six million, one hundred thirteen thousand dollars. The project's been approved by the TIF committee. It's an appropriate land use for the area. As Robert has pointed out, and on some of the pictures I have as well, they've done a really nice job of breaking up the mass, we're not looking at just one big apartment building. The rather, units have been broken up in their form and style and shape such that it fits in the older neighborhood quite well. We're adding density to the urban core. This is consistent with the city's master plan. We ask for your approval of the TIF, TIF support for the project.
Thank you, Don.
I'm Reverend Mark M. Richardson. I live at twelve-twenty Pierce Street. My church is Dietz Memorial United Methodist Church. It's on fourteen-twenty-three Tenth Street, right there on Worthington. And I want to support this. I attended the meeting in June, and I was very impressed with their apartment buildings and residential designs and those little pocket parks. Really glad there's not some soulless bauhaus that they're planning on building. And this is right in the middle of where my- And this is right in the middle of where my church is. I have this classic nineteenth-century stone church. And we have big plans for this church. We just raised enough money to restore our nineteenth-century organ. So I'm just looking forward to all the new people that would be coming to my church. And I know there's been concerns raised about the parking and I don't, I don't, I'm not qualified to comment on that. All I know is that I've been familiar with this little Italy, little Bohemia area for quite some time and it had, in last ten years or so, it's been on a real upswing in development and revitalization. Before that, it went through a long period of decline. So this to me is the right, going in the right direction. Thank you.
Any other proponents?
Lucas Thode, three seven two seven North Hundred and Eighth. Just real quickly, good project overall. I, I'm actually liking the, the mathing more and more a, as I look at it. And good, good thinking with the pocket parks. Good, very good starting point there.
Okay, thank you, Lucas. Any other proponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Karen Bluevis. I live at eight twenty-four Worthington. Yes, there is a Worthington Street. We have two houses on it with quite a bit of distance in between. My house was built in eighteen eighty-eight. Family's been in it since nineteen twenty-three. I have been in it about my, by part, I've lived there about forty years. During that time, I've seen houses next door, cars, garages. I've lived with Grace University and students driving around the block to park and, to go to students, to the student building, which was right across from my house. So traffic, as people point out, is nothing new. We've learned to live with that. We learned to live with any problems we had and rectified it with the new school opening. And going back to the developer, Christian and his team has been wonderful to work with. I am one of the houses that's in the, the pocket, that's in between Bluestone's property. There was no pressure for me to sell my house. Christians has come and sat on my porch and we've talked about plans. And so I see this as being a really, really beneficial project for the neighborhood and green space, yeah, we'd all love green space, but that's not gonna happen. And I think from what I've seen in the neighborhood, that this is one of the best developments we can have. So with that, I urge you to appro, approve the project. I'm also with the Dahlman Neighborhood Association. We had a meeting. Christian's team was there. City members from the planning department were there. There were some concerns. They were brought up. They were answered. And it's unfortunate that some of the people, couple of people who had objections left before the meeting was over. So with that, I ask you to approve the project and give me some neighbors. I want some neighbors. My, I shouldn't say this, my one neighbor up the street's ninety, the one behind me's ninety. So I'd like somebody a little younger that can take care of me in time, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Karen. Any other proponents?
Good afternoon, Matt Brooks. Fourteen fifty-four South Twelfth Street. I'm a newer resident and it's a little daunting to be in a room where I know people have been living in this neighborhood for fifty-plus years and I respect that and I understand that. I hope forty years from now that I can be someone who comes to these meetings saying that I've lived in this neighborhood for forty years. And I'm talking in support of Bluestone for a couple of reasons. One, I know that the developer, as far as I understand, don't have to engage with the community in order to move forward with these projects. And so I personally appreciate the fact that they have taken time to engage. The Cabrini meeting, I was in attendance there and listened to the concerns of neighbors, the excitement of neighbors, the frustration of neighbors during that meeting. Again, a lot of it centered almost, I would say probably forty-five minutes of it centered around parking. So as a newer individual who hasn't had that issue, even living on a twelfth street segment that already has a lot of parking, it was frustrating to me to understand that that was the single lens by which this project was being viewed. Because as a younger individual, I want a vibrant urban core in Omaha. And if we are concerned and only have, only as an option, a s, single-family resident homes and two cars per house, that isn't a sustainable model. And so I appreciate the increased density. I appreciate the pocket parks as someone who studies cognition and the importance of nature on cognition. So I appreciate the very careful consideration which these designs have been implemented. I also appreciate that they have made these in consideration of alternative forms of transport other than cars. So there's bike spaces. There are a lot of opportunity for other types and spaces of transport that I think will be key to future development in this area and in Omaha. I know that parking situation can be tricky, especially in consideration to other projects around the city where that is key, that is a key issue. But I think all of these projects should be looked at on their own merit. And I think this is especially considering what is there currently, just a bunch of empty lots and when I, empty lots. And when I walk my dog around the neighborhood, seeing that empty lots and thinking what could be here and hearing now that we could have lots of new neighbors, not only revitalizing the area, hopefully having younger people move in into these apartments and then hopefully buying these houses that will soon be coming available in the future and also supporting the businesses. I'm young, I like to go out every once in a while and the restaurants, the bars in the neighborhood are fantastic. A lot of them are local and those businesses should be supported by the neighborhood and the folks that live there. And so seeing more people be able to come and support businesses like Via Free and a Sipson Tent, Sero and all the businesses along Thirteenth Street, I think makes a lot of sense. And then my final point, as someone who has elderly parents, one of which will be in a wheelchair soon and suffers from a neurodegenerative disease, as I looked in this area, there's actually very limited ability for me to find spaces that are ADA accessible, especially a lot of these homes that were built a long time ago. They take, they take a lot of work to make ADA accessible with the hills. And so having more options being built and Bluestone has talked about how they will be ADA acceptable, accessible, having more options that my parents could potentially move into as they age and want to move closer to me is something that I'm very, very excited about. So thank you for your time today.
Thanks, Matt. Any other proponents?
Yes, hello. My name is Jeff Jorgensen. I live at fourteen twenty-five South Eighth Street. I've only lived there for fifteen years, but I'm right next door to one of, one of the lots that'll be part of the project. Another one is right across the street from me. I've also been active in, in a group which we called ourselves Historic Tenth Street. We had lots of neighborhood involvement in about twenty nineteen, recognizing that with the closing of Grace University, there were going to be a lot of changes in the neighborhood. And one thing I'm not sure that's been mentioned yet, but there's all of these empty spaces because of Grace University having acquired these, these properties and left them as, as they were. When we first moved in, the university was operating and I will agree with the things that Karen had to say, that there was a lot more traffic than there is now. And some people maybe have gotten used to the fact that everything's very quiet, but that wasn't the neighborhood I moved into and I really look forward to, to living in a neighborhood that has, has a little more activity around. I agree with really all of the proponents' comments that, that have been made, that this developer has really responded not only to recent neighborhood planning and visioning kinds of activities, but by expanding the N C E and the A C I's impact on the project, which, which started, I think, about the time I moved into the neighborhood in, in twenty oh, oh eight. I think they've, they've even bought into that. There certainly is neighborhood concern about parking and about the R seven zoning that exists over lots and lots and lots of very affordable, single-family houses right now. But this project is completely consistent with, I think, our neighborhood vision and certainly with the city's requirements. So those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Come forward, give your name and address and your testimony.
Hello, my name is Donald Graham. I live at eight oh eight Hickory Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one oh eight. My first question about this is, I understand that NOOK is a, not a local company, correct? And so I'm, I'm just asking why a local company would need our TIF funds to build in our community where they're gonna profit from, which would eventually raise my taxes? That is where I'm confused. Why would a company that's already proved themselves to be successful in our area and built other developments, built other developments around the United States, the way I understand, why would they come here and ask us for money to make themselves profitable? That's the part I don't understand. If anyone would like to explain that to me for my lack of knowledge, I'm here to listen.
We, we will once.
Okay.
We hear from all the opponents.
Okay. So the way that makes us feel right off the bat, or myself, I'm sorry, is that they are saying that six oh one oh eight is a bad area and needs improvement. If this is the case, why are they investing in a bad area on our dime? This is our dime. These are our tax dollars that are gonna go up while these people are reaping profits. That's confusing to me as a taxpayer. The other situation I'd like to address, I spoke with Mr. Butler briefly this morning from the planning department and this is a blueprint that they sent out to the residents of this area as to what they're gonna do. And as you can see, it's very, very, very microscopic and damn near impossible to read. And then they also sent out this one here, which gives a lot of questions unanswered to someone who's educated like myself. So one of my other questions that they have here, I live right here on Hickory Street in R seven, so R seven N C E dash C on Hickory. The elevation of this building has a retaining wall there now. Then there's an alley right here where that pin is. And then there's my residence right there. So are you gonna leave this elevation the same? Are you gonna grade it down to the elevation of the alley? The reason I ask this is that if you left it the same and built a three-story apartment complex, the people on the second or third, the second or third floor could see right down in this.
Donald, you just talk to us and they'll have an opportunity later to answer your questions.
I apologize.
That's all right. You didn't, you didn't know, that's all right.
Yes, sir. So that's one of my other questions. The elevation change to the alley, is it gonna be graded down to the alley level or left at the elevation that it's at now? If it's left at the elevation now, how will you prevent the apartment building from seeing down into those people's yard? If they had a balcony up there or windows, do you have any plans for like landscaping to prevent that? Or is there a plan there? Onto the next subject. In this description that they sent out earlier, for someone that's knowledgeable about architectural designing or about blueprints or anything like that, as I said before, it's almost impossible to read because it's so microscopic. And NOOK created it and sent it out to all of us in a mailing with this other one. And so I couldn't find on this drawing, and I'd like to know, where are the trash dumpsters located by your buildings? Where exactly will the parking be in design to the building and design to the other areas? And is the parking possibly able to be made into the building like a lot of apartment complexes are nowadays? People park underneath their residence, which saves a lot of outdoor space.
Hey, Donald, can I ask a quick question? Were you able to participate at the community meeting, the neighborhood meeting?
I would like to address that question. I'm not sure where all these people were getting these flyers to go to the meeting, but I'm sitting in the back with other residents and none of us were notified about any of these meetings. If I was there and got an invitation, I would have been there. Do I have to belong to the Dahlman Associate, Neighborhood Association to go to that meeting? I don't think so. I live in that neighborhood and that association should be representing me, correct? And so they should notify me when there's a meeting about our properties in this scale and that was not done. This mailing in the, in the U.S. Post Office mailing was the first I had ever learned about this. And that was about thir, less than thirty days ago. So, and they sent this drawing here and the one that was presented several times. And those are some of the questions. The other questions I have are, do you guys have any streetlight planning changes on Tenth Street? Because when you come out on Hickory now, on Eighth and Hickory, which everyone uses as a thoroughfare, including the bus system for the school. The line becomes very long at Hickory Street. There's only one stoplight there. And I'm con, really concerned about what you're gonna do to address the turning onto and off to issues of Tenth Street, which I consider a big problem. My, my concerns go on, but I think I've stated the most of them as calmly as I can. I'm just really, really confused about the TIF money. Why would my taxes have to increase for a company not from Omaha, Nebraska, to benefit financially off of me when I've lived in this community for fifty-eight years and I'm tax-paying, abiding city member? So that's my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Donald. Any other opponents? If there's any other opponents that are gonna speak, you can come on down, take a seat up front. That'll help speed up the process.
Hi, my name is Karen Olson. We own the property on eight fourteen Hickory, which is, as that gentleman said, right behind this development area. I have the same questions, mostly about TIF and where are the funds for the TIF going? TIF is generally supposed to go to the re, go back into this development area, but what portion of this is going to NOOK? That is one of my questions. The other question has to do with the privacy, as he said. We are right behind that. If that retaining wall is there and that is a three-story building, our house is right behind dead center of that and would like to know how you're gonna protect my privacy as far as what's in my backyard and what I'm doing. My other concern is the traffic on Hickory Street, which is very, very bad right now. It's fast. We are not able to get a speed bump in there, that we've been refused for that a couple times. The traffic is already too fast. How is that gonna be maintained to be at the proper speed? And again, the, the stop sign on Tenth Street. Those are my issues and my questions.
Thank you, Karen.
Oh, oh, no, my last, last one is, has the gentleman before said, we were not included in any of those discussions on this neighborhood meeting. We got no notification for it. We had no idea they were going on. This letter is the first notice we received.
Any other opponents?
Hi, I'm Tanya Bolter. I live at eight two six Forest Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one oh eight. I've been there for twenty years and lived in the area for thirty years. I live across the street from Dahlman Flats and on the northmost side. And I went to the Dahlman Flats neighborhood meeting and my opinion went unheard there. So, and this meeting, I did know about it, but I was in Montana that day. So, but my problem is. William Street on the south side of Dahlman Flats, between Eighth and Ninth, is completely full of parked cars on both sides of the street anytime after eight or nine P M. And Eighth Street just south of William is often also packed with parked cars from Dahlman Ninth Street in front of Dahlman Flats, between William and Forest Avenue, there are always cars parked in the no parking spots on the street. And Ninth Street itself is completely full of cars from Dahlman Flats. On Forest, on Forest Avenue, a narrow street. Um, on Forest, on Forest Avenue, a narrow street, uh, just east of, east of Tenth, between Ninth and Tenth is completely full of cars from Dahlman Flats and the other rentals there. And even in the areas with city signs that say no parking. I live at the top of the hill on Forest Ave between Eighth and Ninth. And at the first sign of snow for years, the people who live in the homes at the dip on Forest Ave and on Eighth Street have always parked, um, that area, there's a dip that goes down, are you familiar with it? It, anyways, I have a picture. And Dahlman Flats created about seven new spots up at the top. But those spots are unusable in the wintertime. I told them that in the wintertime, the people down there, a lot of them I know, they park in my driveway. And, um, so, in the wintertime, nobody can even park on that curve. In fact, this year, there were nine cars piled up at one time and it was a mild winter. It wasn't even a blizzard at the bottom. And they had to get a tow, a tow truck with a wench to wench them out of there. And, you know, one certain person from the city told me, maybe they can make it a one-way around there. And the reason I'm bringing this up is, we're a block from where they're building all these new, where they're talking about building all these Bluestone developments. And, um, anyways, the wench has to be on Forest Avenue because it's too steep around the corner on Eighth Street. And so, often during the winter for years, there's one or two cars that get stuck down there and the, they have to be wenched out. So, even in the wintertime, people can't park in those spots, so there, there goes about twelve, twelve, twelve spots. And then with people parking in all the city spots that say no parking, um, you know, there's, there's about ten spots there too that I could be calling on all the time and having those cars towed, that are already a problem. So, um, you know, and it's my understanding that Dahlman Flats was allowed to be built with not enough parking spots for its residents. And I know that this isn't Bluestone's problem, but, you know, the city allowed that. So, it's a huge problem, it makes, you know, some people aren't concerned about parking, but we can't even have, uh, big family functions anymore because, because there's no parking for any off-street, there's no off-street parking anymore. Our family used to be able to park on Ninth Street and Ninth Street is completely packed. Um, one thing the urban, uh, developers told us was that we would be able to park in the new cutout spaces across the street from me, they made into a parking lot. Um, but we would be able to park there. But now, we can't even park there because the new, uh, owners of the building, um, bought lease spots from the city. So, go ahead.
Is there another point? I mean, we've got, the parking is a, is a huge point for you. Do you have another point, Tanya?
Um, let me look.
Um, take your time, I just, we understand that that's an issue for you.
Yeah, and it's also an issue, you know, for, for many of my neighbors, somewhere in California right now, they couldn't be here today, too. So, anyways, I, it's, for me, it's really about the parking. The plans look nice, but there's just not enough space. Because on William Street, right where William and Eighth, that street, I have a picture too, is always, and this was at six thirty this morning. That's right across the street from where they plan on building one of the Bluestone developments. And that's at six thirty this morning, it's just packed with cars that way and, and on Eighth Street. So, I don't know where, I don't know where all these people are gonna go. And that's my problem with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Any other opponents?
Uh, stay in my address first and my name, right?
Yes.
Name, name, also my name's Adam Turner, address is fifteen twenty-six and a half Park Wild. A lot of the stuff that's been said, I don't wanna necessarily repeat over, but I just was thinking, while I was sitting here listening, because I didn't get to attend the meeting itself, um, for the neighborhood. But I grew up in this neighborhood my whole life, I lived on twelve twenty South Twelve Street, where the other, uh, where the new, one of the newer apartment complexes has been built. And now having a house on fifteen twenty-six Park Wild, then basically the, um, I mean, I guess I pulled this up just to be able to show for, uh, this is Pine. So, my house is this lot right here, and so that alley is gonna be right in there. And I think when I use, look at this based off the architecture plans, if I'm reading it correctly, it looks like this is where the spaces are gonna, those, basically what is a, a parking lot right now is where it's gonna be at.
Adam, real quick, you said you didn't attend the meeting, were you notified of the meeting?
Um, I was notified of the meeting because I'm a parishioner at Saint Francis Cabrini, that's how I found out about it. Um, now, that being said, like, I will say, I don't know if I ended up just missing something through the mail, someone being left at my door, I don't know. Um, but, all that still being said, the thing I just felt like I should come up and mention with this is that like, I do think a lot of the stuff does sound like a great thing for the neighborhood. But through all the concerns and stuff, I'm just hoping for some sort of compromise to come in from it. Because I think, you know, I'm twenty, will be twenty-seven now, the show, I mean, growing up in this area this whole time, I can see all the growth that has happened in the neighborhood, and I'm not against that, you know, I'd love for there to be, I'd more like, you know, younger people in the neighborhood as well too, because that's how it continues to grow and to thrive. But the, a lot of the concerns that people are bringing up, I feel are very true. And I just want to say that from like my younger perspective as well, and looking at how the neighborhood is forming, how it's growing, whether it's speed concerns, parking concerns, like all these things we've listed through. And like even, I mean, my thought that I just kinda was coming down to thinking, it's like, you know, if it was less, I don't know how that, how that really works out, you know, if it's less units, some way to, you know, to help with that. And then two, I will even say just, the other part that I was thinking was the taxes and stuff involved. Not necessarily my real, my knowledge of how all that works out. But I will say it for myself, a real, um, experience I had this year of my home was that, how much my taxes have gone up within the last couple of years, is a thing where like if I wasn't blessed and fortunate enough to be able to, um, work with a company that could work with me and my income, I wouldn't be able to afford the house I live in anymore because of the increases in the taxes. So, hearing some of the issues brought today are, startling is maybe too strong a word for me, but it's just something that like, again, bringing awareness, I kinda came to finally get some of my own education on it. Um, and I just wanted to give another perspective from a younger, uh, demographic, no offense to any of the people that have spoken. And no offense to you who are, you know, a pro for, because like I said, I'm a compromise. I think it's a great thing to see growth in the neighborhood, but there has to be some way to, I think, to mitigate some of these issues while also keeping the folks who have kept that neighborhood good, strong over the years, um, that. You know, because even down like the, you know, down the hill to the Dahlman Park. I mean, I laugh because the house I own now, I used to remember, I'd ride my bike down to that park all the time. And I, soon as the streetlights would come on, my mom was like, excuse me for language, but like, I just, you know, I, I have a lot of love for this neighborhood and I plan to stay in this neighborhood for a very long time. And so, I wanna see the growth, but I also wanna see these other things addressed and, uh, taken care of, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Adam. Any other opponents? No, nope. Any other opponents? Come on down.
Good afternoon, my name is Kim Kalkowski, I live at fifteen oh two South Tenth Street. And, um, I've kind of got a bad list here going on, so I'll try and make some sense out of it. I went to the neighborhood meeting that they had at, uh, Saint Francis Cabrini Community Center in June. And, uh, it was probably about, I'd say, three to one against what they were doing. A lot of people had never found anything out about this before. We had gotten a postcard in the mail, so that's how I knew to go about that, some people didn't get them. Other people here who I believe are adjacent to the building sites, they're the ones who've come up and have had the plans, there, but I haven't seen those plans. Anyhow, um, the Bluestone Development, I think it's a thoughtful design. And we were given, you know, beautiful pictures of what it's gonna look like, and we got this aside here and this replaying there. So, it's not just sticking in a big block. So, I appreciate the aesthetics of that. But, we're the people who live in the neighborhood and they've, uh, one gentleman said, we're very careful to incorporate it into the neighborhood, but our neighborhood's like ninety percent single-family housing. That doesn't incorporate into the neighborhood at all. In this building, I asked, you know, what about TIF financing? I was told, no, 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 we are not applying for TIF financing. So, that doesn't leave me with a good feeling, because I don't think that all of a sudden, between June and this meeting today, that they all of a sudden decided to apply for it, because they had already applied for it. I'm, really, my big ask is ask for you not to approve this today and to carry it over, because so many of us have had just such recent input on this. There's a little group that's about this big, the Dahlman Park Association, does not really represent the rest of the neighborhood. And if you're gonna come into our neighborhood and you wanna do something, why not involve more than like ten people? I went to the little meeting that they had in April, the April one, kind of everybody was like, parking, 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 because that's what impacted us in Little Italy. Thirteenth Street has four lanes, but every other street is two lanes, some of them are skinny, some of them are wider. Uh, we're gonna have between four and five hundred more cars in the neighborhood. I appreciate that they said that there was a parking study done in two thousand twenty. That was before the Pine School opened up, so you have hundreds of those parents coming by in cars, picking up and dropping off their kids. And then, how a study from twenty twenty before Pine School and then a study of adding four to five hundred more cars to our neighborhood, somehow doesn't impact us? That just doesn't even pass the smell test to me. I, the gentleman who was from, I think, the Lakeside Development? Anyhow, he talked about his frustration having to wait years and years and years, um, and he just keeps getting laid over and he can't start his development product. We would just like to be, I mean, our frustration is like, hey, we're gonna improve your neighborhood. And gentleman from planning maybe said, oh, um, it's gonna be a forty-six million dollar investment in your neighborhood. It's a forty-six million dollar, forty-six million dollar investment into them making profits. The two hundred and fifty jobs, are they gonna specifically hire people from the neighborhood? I don't think so. But, I don't know about that, but that's like, you wanna develop our neighborhood, put a really great childcare center in. Make a big, huge community garden. Right now, we don't have one thing from them besides pretty facades and, you know, admittedly thoughtful planning, uh, and design on it. But we don't have, like, big green spaces, like reduce the number of units by a third or a half. Or, I mean, we just need to think about things. I mean, we talked about parking because we're crazed about parking, already there's not enough anywhere. The young lady who just took pictures, like, I walked every morning, go, there is no place to park. I mean, for anybody who's on William Street and on Eighth and Ninth Street, there's not. I had a niece who lived in the Dahlman Flats for two years. In the old days, everybody could park there. I went by and checked, um, when urban development did it, they cut out space and they said, these are for use to all of you. When they sold it, the new people said, yeah, we're gonna buy these parking places. So, that was forty-six on street parking places that were given up to people in the neighborhood after we were promised you will have these. So, give, take away, are you doing TIF? No, we're not, yes, you are. So, we're not used to getting the full story all the time, and so we get a little cranky about it. And I, I mean, and I'm sure the construction is gonna go on for a couple of years, so that's gonna mean street closings, that's gonna mean street narrowing on an already very confined space. Give a great big huge discount, like half-priced apartments, there's nothing for affordable housing in here, they're, you know, stated they're all market rate anyhow. Uh, why don't you give people half-price apartments if you promise you only have a bicycle or a Metro West pass and you're not gonna put another car in the neighborhood? There, there are solutions that can be caught, gotten to, but we have to sit down like all of us again. Like, the reason there's only a few of us up speaking in opposition is because everybody works. I mean, so many people have said, we wanna come, but we can't come, you know? Obligations to parents, to kids, to jobs. I mean, I'm lucky, I was able to take this afternoon off of work and come, and some other people were too. So, we're grateful for that, but if we wanna have a community meeting, figure something out that they can be happy with and live with, we can be happy with and live with, I. Where's the gentleman? I don't see him here, but who said compromise? Like, everybody doesn't get everything they want, but right now, their plan is a hundred percent them. And we're kinda getting nothing out of it. Mama raised me that world's not fair, you're not gonna always get what you want. But a hundred to zero ratio doesn't really make any sense to me. So, my big ask today is that you not approve this and let them go ahead. You ask them to sit down with us again, hear our concerns and see what can be reworked, because, you know, no shovels have been gotten out yet. And, I mean, they tried this, they started it before and then COVID hit and there were other delays with their other projects. But this is really the first win, most of us are getting out, but, so. Ask you not to approve the test, ask you not to approve the replats, the whatever, everything else needs to be done. And I think I will shush my face, no, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Kim. Any other opponents? I'll just remind you, please give us new information, we've, we've covered everything a couple of times.
Gail Clemm, nine zero seven Hickory Street. I just wanted to briefly say that I think there's some merit into, uh, doing a traffic study, um, based on the projections of these new buildings. When Pine Elementary was open, it changed the traffic flow in the neighborhood incredibly. I mean, if you are there at arrival or dismissal time, um, I've, I've been an educator for over thirty-nine years, so I know how a school, you know, arrival and dismissals work. But, uh, the traffic on Tenth Street, Hickory Street, William, Worthington, all those streets, it increased exponentially with just the addition of the, of the elementary school, and it's not a really large elementary school. Um, if you happen to be coming up Martha, coming east up Martha Street and trying to, um, get onto Tenth Street at, at one of those times, it's virtually impossible, you're, you're gonna take a right turn and go about in a different way. So, my, my only ask is that we really look at how this impacts the traffic in the neighborhood, because with that, many additional people living in the neighborhood, I think it will have an impact. Um, I, I do wanna just echo the concerns of the people that live with their property that aligns with the alley between Pine and Hickory. Um, that's a very narrow space there, um, I'd just like to know, you know, that, that at least those concerns are being addressed by the developers. Because that, I, I, if I, you know, my son lives in one of those properties and I, I think there are legitimate concerns there, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gail. Any other opponents? Okay, seeing now, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Did you already come down?
I did.
Okay, we'll call you, just, Robert, I'm gonna give you the opportunity to stand up. Would you do me a favor, I mean, to address some of these points? Would you give an explanation, a little tutorial on TIF and how it works, so we can get that?
Certainly, and I think that's a common confusion, and that's understandable. TIF is not funded by increasing the taxes of the neighboring properties, that's not how it works. That, the increase in valuation that results from these projects, the projected, um, tax revenue from that is deferred to the resident, or the developer to pay for, um, certain eligible expenses only that are qualified. And those include things like public improvements, so they're not going directly to, say, developer's pocket to pay themselves, they have to qualify it to be an eligible expense. That gets what those funds are used for, and then at the conclusion of, in this case, the twenty-year period, that hits the tax roll, um, at the full value amount that, that building now is at, which in theory, but for TIF would not have happened at all. So, that's the idea of TIF, um, we only get this far because the TIF committee reviewed it and approved that, all of our financials, all of the, um, application materials that say, yes, but for this TIF, this development doesn't happen and you meet the qualifications under the Nebraska statute. I can't speak for the development team, but I, it is news to me that this all of a sudden is a TIF project, this has been the intent from the beginning. So, um, I, I don't know what, quite what for that comment is about. Again, and, and Bluestone is a, is a local company, so I wanted to make that clear as well, they're both. Again, and, and Bluestone is a, is a local company. So I wanted to make that clear as well. They're both Deb and Christian built in Omaha. They're from Omaha. So I want to make that clear as well.
And also before you address any of the other items, the, had a lot of people said they were never notified of a public meeting, public hearing. You can come on up here. We need your name and address. If you want to address the, the TIF and the.
I will.
Public hearing.
Hi, Deborah Christensen, Bluestone Development, fifty-one ten Mayberry Street. Um, I want to clarify a couple of things. We are a local company. Um, Christian was born actually in Carter Lake, Iowa. I've been here since I attended Creighton. We've had a business. We're the only owners and, um, we've had a business for twenty-two years in Omaha. Um, I think there was some confusion about the TIF comment. This project has always been a TIF project. There was a question at the neighborhood meeting about neighboring properties that their taxes would go to the TIF. That's what I said no to. So I apologize if there was any confusion, but this has always been a TIF project. Um, the other thing I want to point out is that for every project we do, very early on, we send a, we send a postcard out to every property within five hundred feet of our property. When the city sends out their packet, which is what I believe the gentleman was referring to, um, the papers, I believe the city's, um, distance is three hundred feet. We actually extend that to five hundred feet. So everybody on Hickory Street absolutely should have received a postcard. The postcard invites them to the neighborhood meeting. In addition, it, um, points to a website that we have during development where we give upnates to the neighborhood on various things about construction.
Remember how many people were at your meeting in June? Was it in June?
It was in late June.
Was that when there were forty people there?
No, there were, there were probably a hundred people. I don't think it was just forty. Do you, anybody remember how many people were there? Um, no, it was, it was definitely more than forty people. Um, I don't know. Joe, do you maybe want to speak to the traffic study? Maybe? Okay.
Good afternoon, Joe Zadina, one forty-seven ten West Dodge Road. Uh, regarding the traffic study, we did meet, uh, we had a pre-application meeting with the city back in twenty nineteen, um, just as a development team. Then we were asked to have another pre-application meeting with Omaha Public Schools and their engineers and their traffic, uh, group. And so we, uh, provided them all the information on our dwellings, number of units, uh, in conjunction with, they have a planned six hundred, uh, student elementary school. So that traffic study was, uh, revised. We reviewed it. It was completed and submitted in conjunction with Pine Elementary and this development, uh, of which implemented a lot of one-ways and it included the on-street parking considerations. So uh, we had participated both financially, but also in, in conjunction with that report. So uh, nothing changed. I did just review that study from March of twenty twenty when it was submitted. Um, and it's the same projection, the same, virtually the same layout minus two lots that were just recently acquired that are very small, single-family lots. So, uh, very consistent what was originally presented to the, to the, um, with the school's project, I would say. Would you like me to talk anything about the grading at all along the elevations?
Yep, the elevation.
Yeah, and maybe, and I apologize for maybe some of my chicken scratches, but, um, I'm going to move this over here as I point. So there's, there's, uh, let's see here, this is thirty-four foot of fall, uh, from Eighth to Tenth. Okay, so there's, there's topography across this uh, part of the, of, of the city in general. But, uh, it worked its way about fourteen foot of grade to the alley, uh, and about another thirteen foot of grade, so about twenty-five or twenty-seven feet. Uh, the, the, the concern is, is the existing retaining wall is five feet in height along here. Uh, well, we will maintain, that existing retaining wall is falling apart. If you drive that alley right now, you'll see that. So uh, due to us having connections around the perimeter of all public streets, we don't have the permission or the ability to change the grade of the alley, H Street, Pine Street. So, uh, we're going to be maintaining as much as we can, the existing elevations for our buildings. Okay? Uh, and our building stepped quite often as you move down Pine Street. I think I counted upwards of eight times, just to follow the topography. So uh, we're not going any, uh, higher. Uh, we will need to maintain a retaining wall because we're proposing parking along the alley. Okay? Uh, and then I'll kind of point out, there's dumpster locations where my pen lands, uh, along the alley to go uh, ease of, of maneuverability for the larger trucks to come in and make their way through the alley. So uh, we're not going to be increasing grade from what's out there today. We will be maintaining retaining walls as needed just for the parking. Uh, and that's kind of my, my answer to that question.
Uh, Donald, uh, when he was up, he mentioned, uh, will there be plantings along that alley? Which might give a screen for privacy towards the people that are on Hickory and back up to that.
Yeah, the building is, is naturally elevated. There's, there's, in a, in an urban site like this where we've, we're, we're kind of, we've got the, uh, parking adjacent to the building. The on-street, there will be landscaping, uh, but not along the alleyway, no. And there isn't actually space for that. I mean, it's, it's parking and then the building and.
Alright.
Yep, sorry. So I'll say that again. So the, the dumpsters, yep, will be located, um, let's see. Here, so where my pen cap is and then the tip of my pen here. So there'll be two locations along the alley, uh, for dumpsters for, for this block. And then they're scattered throughout the interior here, uh, and then along the alley again. I think here and here. So they're, they're notated. I, I understand it's hard to see this on the exhibit, but it's letter D for dumpster. Uh, and we can provide larger exhibits to the neighbors if they prefer.
Talk about your parking for the entire.
Yep.
Development.
You bet. Um, so the parking for the entire development, uh, I believe we have one hundred and eighty-six, um, stalls interior to the lot. Seventy-eight on-street. Okay? Um, and so we've, we've maximized, uh, the interior parking as much as we can. We've, we've invested in retaining walls, especially along the alleyway. Let's see here. Yes, right here along the, the alley. We've got retaining walls upwards of ten feet to, uh, be able to provide interior parking as opposed to uh, on-street or alley situated parking. So we've done the best we can. We've, we've exercised compact parking up to the, uh, probably close to forty percent that's allowed, uh, to just maximize the interior parking of one hundred and eighty-six stalls interior. Uh, and then as, as was mentioned before, some, um, some considerations for bikes, bicycles and other modes of transportation. Uh, and there's a proximity to a bus stop here as well, which would hopefully help.
Joe, are those, are those stalls, are, are they just for apartment use only? Or are they just, the neighborhood could use them as well? I'm, I'm, I'm not sure how that's laid out for you guys.
Certainly. So we won't have, um, leases on the, the stalls on the on-street. Um, I was talking with Deborah about how to handle the, uh, parking interior and I think, uh, they'll be, uh, encouraged or even perhaps considered a part of their monthly, uh, rent, uh, a, a fee to, to park inside of the lots, inside of, you know, not on the street, let's say.
Eric, did you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any additional comments or questions from the board? Eric.
Yeah, so, um, it's been quite a bit covered here. So there are three different cases related to this. I guess one thing to point out is there is currently a, a recommendation for layover for the plats and then the zoning items, which is the expansion of the NCE, um, and the conditional use permit. And, and those are related to, um, the city needing additional information regarding post-construction stormwater management plan. If it weren't for that issue and the additional information that Public Works need, we would have a recommendation of approval of the project. We're very excited about this project. I agree with, um, what's already been said about breaking up the massing, providing, you know, eleven different buildings throughout the site, smaller scale. The height is what you would basically be limited to in any residential zoning district. So that is not um, unusual by any means. We just think it's a really high-quality design and project and, um, trying to, you know, incorporate parking for each site, but not have massive pavement and, and large parking lots like currently exist on the south side of Pine. But really utilizing the alley, parking off the alley, trying to tuck back those surface slots from, you know, the, the, I would say the public realm. Of course, there's residents that live behind it as well. So, um, but there are screening and landscaping requirements that will be incorporated into the project as well. So we just really, um, at the city believe it's, it, it's the type of design in the missing middle housing, the smaller scale, that, that really we think is important for um, both established neighborhoods such as, such as this, as well as neighborhoods throughout the city. So um, we're pretty excited and encouraged by that. I know that we have several uh, city planners in our department that live near and within this neighborhood and, um, you know, they probably wanted to testify and support today. And I said, you know, let's, let's just keep it to, uh, me making a comment that they're supportive of it as well. Um, so I throw that out there. I don't know if there's any specifics that I need to get into. You know, I guess just big picture-wise, the project furthers goals and objectives of the City of Omaha Master Plan, including the creation of healthy and diverse neighborhoods, providing good quality housing options and a mix of patterns, types and styles. You know, I know we, we hear about it each month here at Planning Board and also on city council meetings, the concerns about parking and traffic and infill and, um, you know, I understand change sometimes is needed and necessary. I guess there is a, a quote in a recent article, since our planning director, Dave Fansel, said it so well. It's on a different project, but I'm gonna, I'm just going to read it because, because I thought it, I couldn't have, uh, done it better myself. So, hey, how are we going to continue to add population to build our tax base, to add to our workforce, to continue to attract people to come to this city? It's not just about an apartment project. People have to think about it in a much bigger view. So there's a lot of infill projects and redevelopment that's occurring throughout our urban core and, and all parts of our city. There's a lot of development that's occurred in this neighborhood and, um, you know, many, you know, good quality comments and statements about people appreciating that and also the concern. So I get it. You know, I, I guess I'll leave it at that. So we do have three cases on, um, so that the TIF is, is for approval and then the other, I said, would be uh, laid over for additional information. I do want to point out that if those cases that are laid over, if that's the vote by the board, if they're back on Planning Board next month, the city will not re-notify. Okay? So if anybody has question, if there is a layover of those cases, if, if the applicant has submitted those materials and it's back on for the September meeting, you can always check in with, um, our city staff. There's the number of, of the planner on the notices that you received or the email. So um, please reach out if you have questions. If, if it's not on September and it's on a future month, October or later, we would re-notify within, um, like Deborah mentioned, properties within three hundred feet. So I guess with that being said, for agenda item number nine, staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Rosen? I'm sorry, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six to zero.
So agenda item number fifteen, which relates to the preliminary and final plat, staff recommends layover.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin? Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six to zero.
Agenda item seventeen with, which is the expansion of the NCE, uh, approval to repeal the parking overlay and then the conditional use permit, staff recommends layover.
Do we have a motion?
Motion layover.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, record the vote, please.
Pate?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin? Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six to zero.
Moving on, we're agenda items number ten and eleven will be taken together. Number ten, agenda item number, uh, case C three dash twenty-three dash one eighty-nine. I'll wait just a second. Lucas. Hey, would everybody take your conversations outside, please, so we can continue on? Okay, agenda item number ten. Would somebody shut that door? We're having Donald up there.
Mike can get it.
Alright, thank you. Agenda item number ten and eleven will be taken together. Agenda item number ten, case C three dash twenty-three dash one eighty-nine. Applicant Planning Department, on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the South Side Terrace Phase One TIF redevelopment project plan. Location northeast of Twenty-Ninth and W Streets. Agenda item number eleven, case C, C twelve dash twenty-three dash one ninety-one. Applicant Omaha Housing Authority, request preliminary and final plat approval of South Side Terrace One in minor plat inside city limits. Location northeast of Twenty-Ninth and W Streets. Yep, you're good.
Uh, thank you so much. My name is Bill Lucash. I'm with Bryn Shore Development. My address is nine oh three South one hundred and eighty-fourth Avenue Circle, Omaha, Nebraska. Um, it's a pleasure to be here. I, before we get into the two topics, I thought it wouldn't hurt to give you a little overview of both South Side Terrace Phase One and the South Side Terrace uh, Indian Hill Neighborhood Transformation Plan status. Can you hear me okay? Or do you want me to?
Yep.
Alright. Um, highlighted in yellow here is the southeast corner of South Side Terrace, uh, Garden Apartments. This is the South Side Terrace Phase One, um, housing development that we are currently working on that, uh, is funded in part by the fifty-million-dollar Choice Neighborhood Grant received by both the City of Omaha and the Omaha Housing Authority. Um, the plans for this housing development started all the way back, well, the most recent iteration of plans in two thousand nineteen, when the city received a Choice Neighborhood Planning Grant to prepare for our Choice Neighborhood Implementation Grant, but also to put together a solid strategy for redeveloping the site. Currently, we are in the process of, whoops, I gotta go out. Oh, unfortunately, that's cut off the, the part up to the top. But phase one, you can see down in the southeast corner. Uh, phase two, we're planning to the, immediately to the west of phase one. Phase three to the north in yellow and phase four, which goes all the way over the top of where it cuts off. Um, this is just to illustrate that we're trying to take a phased approach to the redevelopment of the site. Each phase will hopefully take place over the next four to five years as we apply for low-income housing tax credits and other funding sources such as TIF, of course, City of Omaha Home Funds, perhaps CDBGDR Funds. There's a, 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 a real blending of many different funds to support these redevelopment efforts. South Side Terrace Phase One. I gotta go in again. As we said, it's the southeast corner of the property. Uh, right now, well, we are looking at a ninety-two unit development, housing development with a mix of one, two, three and five-bedroom units. There is a large need for five-bedroom apartments, uh, as part of this redevelopment project. Um, housing redevelopment project. And there is a mix of incomes, excuse me, with um, project-based vouchers to support families, uh, that are, uh, preferred um, households coming from, out of South Side Terrace who want to remain, excuse me, South Side Terrace, or other people using project-based vouchers. There are affordable units that were supported by the low-income housing tax credits and those families are generally sixty percent area median income or less. And there are approximately thirty-five market-rate units associated with this. By comparison, uh, from what we just heard, our market-rate units, uh, are, if I can read this, this is really tiny, but, uh, our one-bedroom is eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. A two-bedroom is eleven hundred dollars and a three-bedroom is fourteen twenty-five as proposed. So that's uh, just kind of, kind of gives you a sense of, uh, where our rents are for this type of project and why these types of funds are really needed to support, support South Side Terrace Phase One. We have a rendering here. Project. This would be the, um, W Street side looking north from around Twenty-Ninth Street, so Twenty-Ninth and W, looking slightly northeast. And then we have some elevations as well. To kind of give you a sense of what it would look like. Talk about TIF. I, I know Don is going to have some more information, so I don't want to step on his toes. And then Terry Morrison is here to talk about the plat itself. So with that, I'll step aside and let them run with it.
Yeah, Don Seaton, City Planning Department. I might make use of those, we'll see here. Bill covered the physical aspect of the project, Mr. Lucash, very well, I think. Just to recap, 92 units, multifamily, mixed-income housing, mixed-income housing development. This is a four-story apartment building that's going to be constructed. There are two existing multifamily structures on the site that will be demolished. South Side Terrace is one of the oldest, if not the oldest, public housing complexes in the United States. And the buildings there certainly show a great deal of wear and tear. The developer is Bryn Shore Development, managed by Todd Lieberman and represented by Bill Lucash. I would note that Bryn Shore is not particularly local. I think we need to be cognizant about not disparaging out-of-town developers. We're a big community. We want to be a big tent. They bring in resources from outside the community. And we like to welcome people to become part of our community. So whether a developer is local or from out of town, they both bring good things to the table. The total project investment is about $34.8 million. The TIF support requested is $1,600,000. It's been approved by the TIF Committee, is in compliance with the city's master plan, appropriate land use for the area, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you, Don. Any other proponents?
Terry Morrison, 3552 Farnum Street, I'm with Arhargriffen and Associates on behalf of the owner. Just real quick on the plat, since they talked about the other aspects, the plat, we would be changing the current property into one lot and one outlot. The outlot is actually the vacated V Street right-of-way, which as part of the master planning, we're going to re-establish that as a street. It currently still exists with utility easements and such. So it'll just be one lot and one outlot. We're also dedicating some right-of-way along the three sides based on the new street and landscape and sidewalk cross-sections. I can answer any other questions you have.
Thank you, Terry. Any other proponents?
Lucas Thug, 3727 North 108 Street. First, I actually do have connections to South Side Terrace. My mom lived there way back in the day. I think it's great that we're honoring the history and legacy of the place by regenerating it, passing the torch to a new generation of housers in this community, a new generation of people involved with public and social housing. And I think the family units on the ground floor are a really bold statement about what can be done with an apartment building, that you don't have to settle for something that's just completely the typical five-over-one package. And I appreciate that, that someone's willing to think outside the box a little bit. Very, very good move by the architects there, I think.
Thank you, Lucas.
Thanks, Lucas.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, a closed public hearing. Additional comments, questions? Thanks, Bill. Eric?
I don't have much to add. Obviously, we've talked about this site, a few other cases already. We're getting going here on the first phase. There's another item coming up that speaks to the NCE that will be established for the larger overall area. So specifically for Agenda Item Number Ten, which is the TIF, staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Kathy, record the vote, please.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin? Moore? Morris? Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six to zero.
For Agenda Item Number Eleven, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat subject to the six conditions in the report, approval of the final plat subject to compliance with those conditions and some middle of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the preliminary plat subject to the six conditions in the recommendation report. Approval on the plat subject to compliance with the conditions.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin? Moore? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six to zero.
So yeah, I do have a request. We probably should have reorganized on the agenda if we could do Item Sixteen first before we get to the last case item. I think it's relevant for the site that we just discussed.
Yeah, we should be on Fourteen and Eighteen, but we're gonna go ahead with Sixteen.
Thank you.
And because that's South Side Terrace also. Agenda Item Number Sixteen, Case C10-23-180. Applicant Bryn Shore Development, request approval of the South Side Terrace Neighborhood Conservation and Enhancement Overlay District. Location, an area generally bound by R Street on the north, W Street on the south, 28th Street on the east and 30th Street on the west. In addition to 3030 Upland Parkway, an area northwest of 32nd and Y Street and an area southwest of 32nd and S Street. And Kelly, you're up.
All right, thank you. Kelly Johnson-Norsky with the Omaha Planning Department. So before you, and this individual case is the Neighborhood Conservation Enhancement Overlay for the entirety of South Side Terrace and a couple of off-site locations as well. So within the neighborhood, it would be 32nd from S and T Streets, 32nd Y Streets and 3030 Upland Parkway. So in addition to South Side Terrace proper, those are the sites within the neighborhood that we're looking to adopt this NCE for. And what this NCE would do then would be establish some additional and changed, modified zoning regulations for the redevelopment of these properties. All right, so here is this current site plan and its latest as of today. It is getting modified, however, as we go and we learn different things. The Phase One is down in this quadrant here. But as you can see, we're really trying to stitch this together as a very unified neighborhood that offers a variety of housing types to accommodate the different types of households we're looking to accommodate and have calls, house site terrace home. So similar to our other Choice Neighborhood Project, this would be a combination of replacement public housing units, affordable housing units and market rate units, all intermixed. So with this NCE, we're really looking forward to establishing a high standard of design built within this NCE. So first up is modifying the uses. So within the redevelopment of the site, we're anticipating some non-residential uses to serve occupants of the site. And so we've modified the uses to allow some of those non-residential uses on, say, ground floors of residential buildings. So that's the first modification that we're looking at with this NCE. Another one I want to point out is increasing the transparency requirement. So really ensuring that these buildings offer a lot of windows. Both it makes it more visual appealing to look at, but it makes it nicer for the residents to live in as well. Building entrances, so ensuring that building entrances are provided on the ground floor for ground floor units, which was just referenced, which I appreciate. So anyone who would be living on the ground floor unit would have direct access into their unit. Reducing the parking requirement to one-to-one, which we see in a lot of PURs that come through. And then a requirement for balconies and usable outdoor space. Again, just trying to ensure as much as possible that this is a great living environment for the occupants of these buildings. And it is very usable for the many children we anticipate living on the site as well. So I'll end at that and am available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, closed public hearing. Additional comments, questions from the board? Eric?
Yeah, so, you know, as Kelly mentioned, this is a zoning tool to try to make the, you know, the several phases with this great project a little easier and, you know, know upfront what the expectations are for each of those different architect teams that we will work with, both at the city and Bryn Shore and OHA and all of our partners. So, you know, I'll give a lot of credit to Kelly and Mariana and Jed and the Urban Design Division and working with Bill and other partners on developing this document. There was a lot of thought and a lot of conversations around it and we're very pleased. And I think we're incorporating some of the best of what we've learned with infill projects. And so we're very excited for this new NCE, for this area to help and to guide this effort over the next several years. So staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore? Morris? Pate? Rosacker? Franklin? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six to zero.
We're gonna go back to Agenda Items Number Fourteen and Eighteen. They were on consent. They were pulled off and that, well, Fourteen was removed and so we took Eighteen with it because they're related. Agenda Item Number Fourteen, Case C10-23-197, C12-23-198. Applicant Salvation Army Western Division, request preliminary and final plat approval of Marysville Replat Three, a minor plat inside city limits with rezoning from R5 and R7 to R5 along with approval of the ACI One Overlay District. Location, northwest of 24th and Pratt Street. And Agenda Item Number Eighteen, Case C8-23-201, C11-23-202, also the Salvation Army West Division, request approval of a special use permit to allow a recreational club in the R5 ACI One District pending along with approval of a planned unit redevelopment overlay district. Location, northwest of 24th and Pratt Streets. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Hi, good afternoon. Joe Detlows with Thompson Driesen Indoor Honor, 10836 Old Mill Road. Also with me, members from the Salvation Army, TACT Architecture. I'm here to introduce the project. Project's located northwest corner of 24th and Pratt. It will include a building addition to the existing facility. The addition will have basketball courts, worship area, multi-use areas, computer labs. As part of that development, we'll also have, I'm not sure, this, oh, there we go. We'll have off-street parking along the north and the west of the addition as well as on-street parking along Manderson and 24th Street. 24th Street will also be improved with corner nodes, wider sidewalks, landscape planners. As part of the PUR process, we are asking for some setback waivers, reduction in parking requirements. The parking requirements based on occupancy load does require more stalls, but we feel with the uses, the major uses, which would be the worship, basketball courts and the community kitchen, that all of these events happen at off-peak times from each other as well as the facilities on the bus route. We'll provide bicycle parking around the site. And we feel that a lot of the members will be people within the community. So with that, I'll answer any questions. And I think members from the Salvation Army would also like to speak or present.
Thank you, Joe. Any other proponents?
Marsha Miller, 9917 Ames Avenue from the Salvation Army. My husband and I are the administrators of 24th and Pratt. We have a lunch program that runs Monday through Friday, feeding about 200 people daily. We have an after-school program that benefits that community as well. We have several older adult programming that happens in that building as well as recreational activity that happens in that building. And we are happy to serve the community. This is a huge investment into North Omaha and we want to match what's already happening on 24th Street.
Thank you, Marsha. Any other proponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Major Dan Saka. I am the area commander with the Salvation Army of Omaha. Address is 10755 Burt Street in Omaha. Just to really reiterate what Major, excuse me, Lieutenant said, the Salvation Army has had a presence in the North Omaha area since 1896, starting with our Booth Hospital for Unwed Mothers. And we're just continuing that history, trying to make sure that we are serving the North Omaha as the best, in the best way possible. This will be an expansion of our programming, not addition to our programming, but expansion in our programming that has been existing since the 1970s. If you've been, if you're aware of the building at all, this will be an expansion that will allow to increase what we're able to do in the lives and the children and the individuals that live in and around that neighborhood, providing them opportunities for safe space to continue their education, to continue literacy, continue opportunity to access to health and wellness and with a large investment in multimillion-dollar level to that area. So we would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? You can come on down.
Hello. My name is David Jeffers. Me and my brother Nicholas Jeffers own the property at 2438 Manderson Street. We rescued that house from city's demolition list. Takes a lot of money to bring a house back to life. My brother Nicholas resides there full-time. We were also using the property as an air bread and breakfast. Brought in people from all over the world, China, Japan, Australia, New Zealand, France and the US. That came to a close during the pandemic when they shut the College World Series and Berkshire Hathaway meetings down. But we were trying to improve the neighborhood and bring people into the neighborhood. My brother was visiting last week from Florida and he stayed at the house on Manderson. In the morning, as they were getting ready to leave, they were approached by two gentlemen who asked for money. My brother said he didn't have cash on him because they're traveling, they're using credit cards. The guy immediately hit him in the head and knocked him to the sidewalk and tried to kick him in the head. His wife came out, started screaming at him, said that she had called the cops and they abandoned their mission and walked away. So there's crime in the neighborhood. We haven't had problems with the bread and breakfast until last week when it affected us personally. I personally reside at 3522 Lincoln Boulevard behind the Salvation Army. I have no problem with the Salvation Army per se. But in increasing the size of this project, they're gonna increase the magnetism of the draw to that particular area. I went into their offices on Pratt on Monday and asked if I could see their plans and I was told they had none. The gentleman there, I asked questions about the plan and I said, where's the front entry? And he says, well, right now, he said, it's on Pratt, but because of the congestion, we're gonna move it to Manderson. Well, property across the street from their front entry is Evans Towers. There's no entry to Evans Towers from Pratt Street. So the congestion is their own, meaning they're gonna move their congestion to Manderson now. Maybe better because they have a parking lot in front of them to get it farther off the street. And I have no problem with the green space they have on the west end as long as it stays that way, which is directly across from our property. So my main concern here is that I have no issue with the Salvation Army. They present a lot of good programs to that neighborhood. But they also attract bad characters. And I would hope that they would increase their security and also assign someone to pick up the trash because they're holding basketball games in the evening. That's all.
Thank you, David. Any other opponents?
Hi, my name is Janine Brown and I live at 2434 Pratt Street. Like I said, I got some signatures from the two-week, the two-block radius where they're gonna be building. A lot of them couldn't get off of work because we just got information last week about this meeting. I took, I should have been at work too, but I took off to do this. And first of all, I want to admit, none of us have any problem with the Salvation Army. We applaud what they're doing for the community. They've been helpful for a long time, and we understand that they wanna expand, but our neighborhood's been there. I grew up in this neighborhood. Couple of my neighbors grew up in this neighborhood. We upgraded our homes, and we just don't want that in our neighborhood. It's like a business. Twenty-fourth Street, they got a lot of room out there, they could do it out there, but there's gonna be more people coming into our little neighborhood. And these young kids nowadays, drugs, gangs, it's just gonna attract that. And there are trash, it's trash along the road. I took pictures, but anyway, you know, they're just, our neighborhood is quiet neighborhood, it's been there for a long, it's an old neighborhood. And if they got the vacant lot, they could build houses, affordable housing back there, and find another place to put that. Twenty-fourth, there's room there, not take our neighborhood. And then my family's been there, my mom and dad, they built a fence, a patio, and now they're saying that part of that patio belongs to them. We took care of that area for forty years. And I asked the guy, I said, are you gonna mess with my property? No, but I think they're gonna build a fence, a parking lot. And my backyard's here, it looks like the parking lot's gonna be here. I already have, I'm already next door to the parking lot now. They have games out there, people congregate in the parking lot, curse, and my backyard's right here. I'm gonna retire, I was gonna build a playground for my children out there, but that's not gonna be safe with them right next, a parking lot next to them. So I'm saying, I applaud what they're doing, but just not in our neighborhood. Now, like I said, I have signatures, nothing's official because we didn't have enough time. We just found out a week ago about this. But I don't know if you wanna see the signatures or, but we're planning on having neighborhood meetings.
You can bring them up here and give them that, Eric, if you'd like.
We just wanna preserve our neighborhood. We've been there a long time. Some of the neighbors, we grew up together, they're there, they build the houses up, and we just don't want all that boom-boom-boom noise of our neighborhood. We wanna be able to sleep peacefully, not with one eye open.
Thank you, Janine. Any other opponents? Seeing none, a closed public hearing. Comments, questions from the board? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thanks, Mike.
Our operations address is on the corner of Twenty-fourth and Pratt. Yes. It's extending on to the Manderson side.
To the north and to the west.
That's the existing facility, right?
So we have, we are looking into, and part of our, part of our development is to make sure that we are making the neighborhood a safe, a safe neighborhood, and making sure that we are investing in additional security that's already there. These are, again, these are not new programs that are happening in the neighborhood. These are just an expansion of the property and expansion of the neighborhoods that we are already providing to the community. As you can see in this rendering right here, specifically in this area, we're going to be, we're gonna be developing a larger basketball facility area. But here is already a basketball facility area. This is all new programming, and this is, this will be, excuse me, this is all existing programming, and this will be new programming that will be on the Manderson side, which is the concern, I think, of some of the neighbors. The property that butts up to our property right here is, has, this is the plot, this is the plan as it's plotted out. This is the property that we did secure. So there's not, there's not a plan to expand into the, into property that is not secured by the Salvation Army at this time. We will have, we will have an expanded, expanded employment, employees that will be able to help. We are currently making sure and maintaining the property as we have, as we have obtained it, and we will be continuing to make sure that we are not applied on the community.
What do you use now for security?
Right now, we have a security, we have a video security system.
Okay. And then if you're looking at expansion, are you looking at possibly having off-duty people on uncertain days?
We will definitely be looking into that, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Janine mentioned trash. What's the issue with trash here at your site?
I'm going to defer that to Lieutenant if you don't mind.
Okay.
We have a social club that's across the street, almost across the street from Twenty-fourth and Pratt.
Name it, name an address.
I'm sorry. Marsha Miller, twenty-four twenty-four Pratt Street. We have a social club that's directly across the street, almost directly across the street from Twenty-fourth and Pratt. We have spoken to the...
To the east.
Is that the east? To the east of our current property. We've spoken to that owner several times, and we do have, we have a local North Omaha person, JJ two-point-oh, that does clean up our property, as well as whatever is left over on the weekends from the social club across the street.
When you say a social club across the street, is that owned by somebody else?
It is owned by someone else.
And the trash is coming from them?
They use our building, they use our property and along Twenty-fourth Street to park, and we do clean up Twenty-fourth Street. We also participate in the neighborhood cleanups when they have them on Twenty-fourth, down, all the way down Twenty-fourth Street. We are heavily invested in keeping our neighborhood clean.
Thank you, Marsha. Any other questions, comments from the board? Eric?
Yeah, so a couple items on the agenda. One is the plat and the consolidation of the rezoning and applying the ACI overlay, so that's number fourteen. That's pretty self-standard. I guess I'd make a few comments on, you know, a pretty sizable modification or waiver for parking. So we discussed this briefly in the pre-meeting, and it was touched on by the development team and the operator, just with some of the larger drivers of the traffic, the worship center, the basketball facility, and other activity don't coincide together, occur at the same site, or at the same time. So staff was comfortable based on the operating statements. We do have a provision that states, you know, if traffic does become a problem, you know, provide us a plan that, you know, additional parking could be had on the, you know, the open grass area to the northwest portion of the site. Ideally, we don't want that to be paved, but if it does become an issue, that, you know, would be the likely area that parking could be expanded. So we do have some conditions based on that. So unless you have any specific questions, for Agenda Item Fourteen, read the recommendation. Approval of the ACI-one overlay district, approval of the rezoning from R-five and R-seven to R-five, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the five conditions, approval of the final plat subject to conditions of prelim plat approval, and submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the ACI-one area-specific improvements overlay district, approval of the rezoning from R-five and R-seven to R-five, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the five conditions outlined in the report, and approval of the final plat subject to conditions of preliminary plat approval and submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request onto City Council.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris? Paige?
Yes.
Rose Sacker? Franklin? Moore? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six to zero.
For Agenda Item Eighteen, staff recommends approval of the PUR, subject to submission of acceptable final plans, and then approval of the special use permit subject to the seven conditions in the report.
Just a second, I forgot to do this earlier before I asked for a vote. Marsha, would you stand up real quickly? Would you agree to meet with David and Janine and talk to them about their...
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. All right, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the PUR, subject to submission of acceptable PUR plans, approval of special use permit, subject to meeting the following seven conditions in the staff report.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rose Sacker? Franklin? Moore? Morris? Paige?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six to zero.
I think that's it, isn't it? All right. Do we have a motion for the pre-meeting minutes and the public meeting minutes from July? We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris? Paige? Rose Sacker? Franklin? Moore? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved five to zero.
The guys, all of you in the back row? Yes. All right. Do we have?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin? Moore? Morris? Paige? Rose Sacker? Mr. Chair? Approved six to zero.